I would like to call the June 27, 2023 Callwood Meeting Budget Workshop to order at 4:05 PM. Dr. Thomas, do you have any amendments to the agenda?
No, sir, I do not.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Send me.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Agenda is approved 5-0. At this time, I will make a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss or deliberate upon the appointment, employment, compensation, hiring, disciplinary action or dismissal, or periodic evaluation or rating of a public officer or employee, or to interview applicants who are in possession of the superintendent. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Wellington. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sue.
Aye.
Oh, we are adjourned to executive session at 5:06 PM. The motion was made by Steve Lau and Secretary Amy Gibson to come out of executive session at 4:45 PM. The vote was 5-0. No other action was taken. May I have a motion to approve the executive session minutes as presented?
Move.
Mr. Wellington. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Lau. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
My chair is 5-0. Next item is personnel. May I have a motion to approve the personnel action report as presented?
Send me.
Mr. Gibson, have a second, please.
Second.
Mr. Lau. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next item is works session, budget workshop with Amy Gibson to the chief financial officer.
I know, someone did that.
That's what we've been holding our breath for.
That's, hey, you and me both. All right, it's been a while. I must really laugh. I've got your notebooks and I've been, I've been told go fast, you know, go as fast as slow as y'all, and y'all want me to, so.
We've got the end break ready, just a minute.
All right, if I go too fast, y'all tell me. All right, so look at your agenda, we're basically covering the entire budget today in some shape, form, or fashion. We had several sections we brought before, but there've been quite a few changes since then. In particular, state health, we had certified and non-certified changes, they were all the increases, of course. Even though we get the funding for that, we may get some QVE earnings for that state health, we still have to budget the expenditure, so. We went through several things, we have now updated the non-certified salary schedule and considered the possible 10 years credit for the non-certified staff. We do not have all the paperwork back from everybody, but I still think we've budgeted enough to take care of it. So let's just get going. And I probably did something I shouldn't have, I put the summary sheet on page one. Last time I put it at the back. But one thing you're going to notice is that property tax, that alarm tax box is empty. Of course, at this time, we do not have a digest, we have not set a millage. I hear good things from the county government that we could potentially see at least as much of an increase this year as we did last year. Of course, we are anticipating that.
Which would be in the range of?
I can't tell you that off the top of my head, but it would cover this budget. How about that?
Okay.
Give or take, there are lots of considerations, as you know, you have all heard, I'm sure, about issues with reassessments, lots of reassessments went out. Depending on, that calculation does affect the digest. So that has to do with rollback, so I will have to get all that information. None of it is available at this time, and I just talked to them again yesterday just to see, I don't even have a date right now. But typically, it comes in in August and we get it taken care of, get our tentative and final approvals done in September, so we hope that that is done no later than that. We actually have some, with Georgia Department of Education, we have deadlines when it comes to our budget at the end of September, so. So, as you see, the increase and decrease from the FY '23 amended budget is in the right, far right-hand column. There's also a description for items that just wanted to bring your attention to. We had to do quite a bit of moving around. Georgia Department of Education tells us where to put people, what function code, what object code to use, so we all identify them the same way. So I had to move several positions, you'll hear about that. I'm going to cheat this time, and I'm going to go ahead and tell you some things, just so you can relax and not be worried about it. Overall, of course, we had an increase, and you can see that at the bottom right of the increase-decrease column. I do think we can cover it with the potential growth in the digest. Currently, if this budget is approved, 84% of our budget would be for salary and benefits, where it was about 82% last year. 16% would be for operating. Our overall general fund, operating budget is decreasing. Our expenditures, it's salary and benefits, it is the salary increase from the state and the local level, and then the state health increases. So as we go through this, I'm not going to say it over and over, you know, just know every single category. Salary increases that y'all have already approved and that the state pushed through in the state base, and then that state health increase for certified, they covered most of it. Non-certified, there is an increase that starts at January '24 and it runs eight months of their pay. So that is significant, and that is not offset by the state, so that becomes a local expense. All right, let's flip onto page two. This is instruction. Just kind of remind you, the top section is salary and benefits, the bottom section is operating. It is broken up at the bottom by school or department, whichever, whichever way we needed to fund it. The top section, it's a 4.28% increase. I did have to move our instructional technology specialist, had been coded into instruction for quite some time, so six non-certified people moved from instruction to 2210. You will see them in a few pages. So that was a decrease here of over $200,000 plus their benefits. The only increase, this was not an add of staff, this is straight-up salary increase based on staff certification level, experience, and the non-certified schedule increasing. The bottom section, I'm going to explain just a little bit, because I know this is some, the first time some of you have heard this. In this section, this is not the instructional budget for five of the schools. That is in the Fund 150 consolidation. What is here are their contracted pair pros, and that's as we're using ESS as our administrator for those pair pro positions. We have 29 employed paras across general fund. The others that we have are contracted, so every time someone leaves, that 29 goes down, and I have to add to contracted. So you're going to see in salary and benefits, you'll still see a line for pair pros. There are 21 of them in this budget. Then the rest of them are contracted, are the ones who've left and we've replaced. Does that make sense? So we also, in that area, and under operating, we have, we also have ESS handling our subs. So the funds for subs are all here. So this is not instructional operating money for the schools, it's their subs and their contracted pairs. Now, for the high school, the high school is not involved with Fund 150 consolidation because they are not Title I eligible, and that's where some of the money comes from. So their full instructional budget is here, their subs, and a textbook adoption, it was just about $60,000 this year. Three different categories of math classes, and then a few additional class sets for some forensics and classes like that. So not a, not a big textbook adoption. We did not do a K-8 math textbook adoption this year because the standards, they were satisfied with what we have, they did not want to make a change of, the standards have changed, but we feel like we can continue the way we are, and decided we need to do that K-8 at a later time, not this year, in a later year. As you see, the budget is also broken out in vocational technology, that is their instructional money for in the classroom, also their subs. We're moving contracted OTPT and speech language to Fund 2100. Again, definition from the state encourages us, and two, there are more options to potentially earn Medicaid reimbursement if we take it out of QVE earnings. So we're going to move it over to 2100, and we hope to launch, we, we earn about $120,000, $125,000 a year from Medicaid, we really hope to bump that up. If, if we meet certain criteria and the parents agree to let us claim the benefit, we have an administrator that will process that for us, and it actually helps offset the expense for different types of services that we have to provide.
Yeah, questions?
Yeah, okay. Overall, it's a decrease in operating of 0.45%, but the grand total is about a 4% increase overall, which equates to $1.3 million. Of course, this is the largest category in instruction, so it carries the most weight and the most people. Y'all have questions about instruction?
Now, that, at the last meeting, we voted to increase the staffs, levels up, the teachers as well as upgrade the more competitive salary for our non-certified peoples, commitment to keep our people, and I believe we can make this work.
All, all of the changes that were requested are incorporated in this budget. So that's the state step, the state increase of $2,000 to the state base, the local increase that goes along with that, and then the increase from 10% local to 11%, the non-certified, the leadership schedule, all of those are incorporated in this. Behind page three is the actual detail of the Pickens High School instructional budget. It's page four through page, that's it, seven. Excuse me, page eight includes vocational. I will let you peruse that detail at your leisure, but as always, you can contact me if you have any questions. If y'all are good, we'll move to page 10, which is pupil services. Salary and benefits increased in this area by 3.22%. As you can see to the right, this is where our therapist, our school psychologist, our social workers, those type positions, and the clerical staff that goes along with them. The bottom section, the operating expenses are for the nurses, the attendants, data clerks, counselors' offices. The central office operating expenses are for the social workers that are stationed here and for the testing budget across the county. You're going to see blank, a blanked-out area for the schools for FY '22. In FY '22, we incorporated their school pupil services budget into Fund 150, we have since removed it, it just was not a good fit at the school level, so they requested we remove it, and it actually has worked out better since we did. But these are the budgets each school have. The nursing budget did increase, actually doubled, and this is why. A few years ago, we started buying AED machines across the county. We had safety grants to help us do that, we had people donate money, and we had the athletic department buying some of them, too. Now we have quite a few across the county, we've had them for several years. Every year or every certain number of years, you must replace the AED pads, batteries, certain equipment. It's going to cost, to get it all up to date, $20,000. So on top of the regular clinic budget, we've incorporated those replacement supplies. Just so you know, we also have a request on the table that will go through probably SPOS, CAPL outlay to purchase replacements. They're only good for a certain number of years, parts wear out, some, one, the portable one is broken. So we need to set a schedule for replacement, kind of like we do with the heat and air units. These are things that, you know, even though that's not something you use every day, it still needs to be on a replacement cycle, it's still a piece of equipment, and things do deteriorate on the inside. So Ms. Smith has given me an, an inventory and a replacement plan, and I believe this first round would take about $26,000 to replace a few machines that are expiring or broken. So, but this part is just, this applies the pads, the batteries that go in the machines to keep them running. Can't put maintenance items in SPOS, maintenance items, repeatable items, then you should do like a software renewal, I can't do things like that at SPOS, so. Central office, I'm going to flip to page 12, excuse me. All the school budgets are in here, again, I'm going to let you peruse those, actually flip to page 18. We had a couple of changes here, this is the area, the top line contracted services that we moved, we had one OTPT slot for Medicaid, we moved the, all the rest of them, occupational, physical, and speech therapists into this category. It went from 125,000 to 368,000 with the potential to earn quite a bit of that back. If this, if it meets all the criteria, you can earn 40, 45% of those, that funding back. If it's in QVE, we cannot do that.
And these are, these are things that were recommended through the audit, some of these moves are transferred?
It's, this is Georgia Department of Education, they have a definition for every one of these codes, so this is the recommendation from them, actually. We've been able to house certain things in instruction, they strongly encourage you to move them, and so we're just moving it from one spot to another. We would have them no matter what, but we, they would have been in, they've been in instruction for years.
Just strictly re, re.
Like the tech specialists, they just want them in 2210, we're just moving them to the definition. It actually helps me, because sometimes their salary would be in instruction and their operating money would be somewhere else. So this is actually, they're cleaning up some of the definitions, so you get them in, all, all of them in one location. So for budgeting purposes, that's fantastic, it's a lot easier to track. So that's basically what they're doing, it's kind of some cleanup. But with the OTs and PTs, you'll see that increase here. Also, UGA extension, we've added, we've agreed to add another person that increased their budget from 25,000 to about 35,500. We do share that expense with Pickens County Government. Everything else in this department, in this area, pretty much stayed the same, but it's a big jump, it says 85%, but it is a smaller budget, but I did want to point out those changes, just so you weren't concerned about that. Overall, for 2100, it is an increase of, turn page. 14.82%, which equates to just under $323,000. Y'all have any questions? All right, let's move on to page. One of these days, I am going to have an index where I actually know what page number I need to jump to. Page 23. Improvement of instruction, this is where most of our curriculum activity happens, this is where we need to move the tech specialist from instruction to here, and you'll see a new line item, has been zero in the past, tech specialist, object code 161, so that's 258,000 to cover the salary increases for this year. We are also, you'll notice, an addition of what's called MTSS personnel. These were folks who have been teachers in the system, so they have come from instruction. They are support staff to help with things you may have heard of, like RTI. They work with the staff to help identify ways for us to better teach the children, deal with the children, am I?
No, you're exactly right, this is just another mechanism to help with RTI, these are new personnel just designed to help think of other intervention strategies to help students succeed and help your class function properly.
You know, these are the positions that like Holly Riley and Myers took?
Yes, yes, there are three, and they did come from our instructional staff, and so they have been transitioned into this category to do the help. And another position that came here is we have been able to fund two media specialists at the high school. Well, you know, we lost one last year, and you have the option to either have two media specialists or a media and an instructional tech person. So they chose to go with an instructional tech person. Well, I can't fund that in media, I have to fund it here. So you'll see media go down, and that position is moving here. So we have a lot of this moving back and forth, we would have had the positions anyway, they're just moving them from spot to spot. So it's not hiding any increases, it's just moving people from category to category. So that did, it does, it's an overall increase of 64.48%. In the operating side, we have the technology department, and he did have a significant increase, and it's on page 24, it's all his detail. Our web-based subscriptions went up by about $75,000, and most of that has to do with something else, SOFOs, I think I say that correctly, and that is our antivirus, is our, part of our firewall, it is to protect our system and our users, so we've been able to, we've been under a contract where there was not a charge for a couple of years, now that charge is back, so of course, we do want to continue to protect the system as much as possible. As you scan down, you know, everything, I will say this, in operating, I was very pleased that we could reduce the operating budget to a certain extent, but prices have increased quite a bit, so we're really trying to be a little more thrifty, you know, I had a school talking to me about, how do I control my paper? We've ordered blah, blah, blah cases of paper, and that's just too many, and I was like, you control it, it's your, you inventory it, it's in your system, if you need to lock the door, lock the door, just so you know when it's coming in and out. But I think people did a, a good job of really trying to get a grip on this, as they have noticed that prices are going up, so they are, they are being conscientious, and I do appreciate that. You know, we try not to budget just for the sake of, hey, I need a 10% increase, our folks, they're, they don't do that. Most of the time, I can say, tell me what you need, I know, tell me what you want, but tell me what you need. So we're going with what they need, not always what they want, but we do some of that, too. Excuse me. So this is another 1.3% increase overall, again, with most of it coming from the salary and benefit area. Page 25 is instructional staff training, this is what we used to call state staff development. This is the portion, we earn this on our QVE allotment, this is the portion that actually goes out to the school level and is for instructional staff. Most of the time, if somebody like me, if I need to go to training, that state staff development has to be broken down into my category, where like I'm business services, so mine has to go into business services, so little pieces of that money have been broken out across the system. You'll see in just a minute, school admin, since we have five brand-new principals, we did take a good bit of money and push to, so those principals can go through some training. I think Dr. Thomas, we were going through, Carolyn Wilkins was going through some of the staff development with him, board members are required to have training, we need y'all to, to know what we're doing here, superintendent needs training, central office staff, so it is tiered out and broken apart, we're very fortunate to still have our funds for next year that can offset quite a bit of expense, so we really haven't had, we haven't been struggling with this category at all, but, but we do still have it for the school level. So it's an increase of $217 from prior year. Page 26 is media services, pretty self-explanatory, this runs our six media centers in the schools. We did lose that one person, we earn about $56,000 in operating. The reduction in the staff and benefits, of course, is that person, that instructional tech that we moved over to 2210. But in the bottom section, you're going to notice I put a line for contracted pairs. We break out the earnings for items like this by FTE at the school level, so they, they don't get like $2,000 apiece, they earn what they have at their school, so if you have 500 students, we break it out, you earn for 500 students, you may earn for 700 students. But when these contracted pairs get involved, it skews that and it can eat the entire budget, so I broke it out and we've added it, we're basically moving it from salary and benefits down to this contracted line in operating. So again, kind of six, one half dozen of another, but overall, we had a reduction of $8,078 in this category. Behind this page is the detailed budget for each media center and each school. And y'all tell me if y'all want me to go through each one of them, if you don't, I'll just keep moving. Okay. Page 33 is general administration. This is you guys, this is the superintendent, the administrative assistant to the superintendent, this is where we pay legal fees. In the upper section, you'll see the salary and benefits for the positions I named, we were able to not have a, a large increase because we did lose a position from last year. We had a 50% legal employee that we no longer have, so that's why you're not seeing much of an increase in that section, given all the changes that have come across. In the operating expenses, you will see a line at the very bottom of the page that says purchase legal services. We did increase this just a little bit, just to protect ourselves. One thing we've kind of come across as we have used contracted legal is you cannot, cannot always use one attorney or one firm for everything. It's like special ed, you may need a more specialized attorney. What used to be Harbin and Hartley, which is PKKN now, they do school, school boards, they know school systems, they're great for all the general stuff, but when it comes to something specialized like special ed, we might need to contact someone else. So we've got about $50,000 here, we did not spend much toward the end of this year, so that's a good indicator, but we did budget $50,000 just to protect ourselves in case we do. Overall, it's a 2.44% increase, which is about $14,145 for that category. Page 36 is school administration, this is to run all six school offices, it includes principals, assistant principals, receptionists, and school bookkeepers. Their salary and benefits increased about 6.85%. Their operating expense, we did try, when we allot this money to them, again, it's earned by FTE, but we, this is where we pushed a good bit of money in for those principals so they could do some professional learning. So you're going to see a little bit, they're kind of all over the place per school, but we were trying to make sure that we allotted a certain amount of money to each one, just so they have the opportunity to participate with those professional development conferences and workshops. Overall, it's a 6.55% increase, which equates to about $206,259. Again, behind the summary page, on page 37 is a budget in detail for each school. We'll flip to page 44. This is business services, this is my folks, this is payroll, me, the bookkeeper, the central office bookkeeper, accounts payable, all of us down, not all of us downstairs, most of us in my department. There's not much that's changed in our category, yeah, very slight changes, most of it is the salary and benefit increases, increase overall of 11.03%, which equates to $56,642. All of the operating money is used to, like we buy Micker ink because we print checks. It is anything to do with the processing of accounts payable, payroll, reconciliations, bookkeeping, those type items. I'm going too fast, y'all let me know. Okay, page 46 is maintenance and operations. Salary and benefit increase was about 16.27%. The contracted services actually decreased slightly. Our, we were able to decrease electricity and gas, our energy sources, just a little bit. Overall, it's a $62,590 increase, the entire maintenance department is budgeted here and the clerical staff that goes along with that department. I will say that most, most of that crew can pursue the 10 years credit, so we did err on the side of caution and, and make sure we have plenty of room to cover that. This is one of the departments, too, that will have overtime occasionally. If we have a breakdown in the middle of the night, if we have a pipe burst, they're the ones that get called, so we do have to be prepared to cover that overtime. So we do have to be prepared to cover that overtime. Something else I'll point out as we're going here, that spent today column, we've processed all regular payrolls now. We have two more supplemental ones, most of them have to do with ARC money. It's like summer camp, summer remediation. So there's very little else out of general fund that's going to come through. So these numbers you're seeing for spent today is very close to what we will have for the year. M and O and transportation are due that continue after school ends, and we might still have a little bit more. We have quite a few purchase orders still open there, but I do not think either one will get anywhere close to spending all their budgeted money. Page forty-eight is transportation. Approximately the same setup as we have now, sixty-one drivers, two full-time subs, covers extracurriculars, step increases, training for drivers and move-on when ready, three mechanics and ten monitors. Overall increase of four, four point five nine percent. In the operating side, it is a reduction, but I want to bring your attention to page forty-nine. There is an item on there that is purchase or lease of buses, object code seven thirty-two. We were given state main, now we've not received it. It is out there for us. We ordered buses, they are not here yet. So six hundred and sixteen thousand dollars that we budgeted in revenue and expense has not happened. This typically does not happen with this type of money. It is a grant, it's a specialty grant. We're not really sure how we need to handle this, but we have asked and we're waiting for a reply. So I may have to leave this FY twenty-three PO open until, until our buses come. Right now, they're scheduled for October or November. I may have to close it down and reissue next year. So if I have to come back, at the time I was doing this budget, I did not have an answer. So if I come back, don't think I'm crazy, but we have not spent this. The PO is there, and they may tell me just to leave this commitment on the table until they come in. But you have to handle that, it's such a large item, that is material when it comes to audit for us. It's over six hundred grand. So we'll do exactly how they, we'll handle it however Department of Education says. But just so you know, that we didn't, you know, just not buy the buses. They've been on order for almost a year. So this is actually a decrease because of that, of four hundred and fifty-six thousand three hundred seventy dollars. If that six hundred and sixteen was not there, it would have been an increase. But, and, and like I said, it's gonna, they're coming at some point. I don't know if I'll have to put it in this budget or the next. But I suspect that they'll let me keep this one open, but we'll see. Page fifty is central support. We talked about the superintendent and his office and y'all. This is kind of for the rest of the central office staff. This is human resources, benefits, some of the different staff that's here that works with us. Increase in this category is seventeen point six two percent. And operating increase by five point oh two percent. Most of this increase has to do with just simply cost increases, they're very slight overall. But it totals about a hundred and six thousand nine forty-five. Again, with the brunt of that being salary and benefits. Page fifty-three is other support services. The only item that is in here is our RISA fees. We are a member of North Georgia RISA. We have been paying around seventeen thousand dollars based on our FTE count. We have been notified that it is going to go up about two thousand dollars. So the twenty that we've been budgeting is, is still sufficient for next year, so we will leave that in place. All right, that's general fund. Tell me what questions you have. Anything you need to know. We've talked a lot about this, y'all know, you know, y'all have known some of the prices on some of these things. So there's not a lot of change other than those salaries and benefits.
Well, so many of these things we've already covered.
Well, and see, we had to go back, state health, you know, we had to plug in all that as those changes came through. Okay, we'll just keep moving. Fund one fifty consolidation of funds. This is just a very simple summary page. We've only been doing it since FY twenty-one. The way this works, we take a little bit of general fund money and a little bit of federal money, and we put it together in a pot. And we can run things like schools that are in federal, are approved in, to receive some federal funding. It relieves them of all those rules and regulation, not all, some of the rules and regulations in red tape and paperwork at the school level when it comes to trying to buy anything. For example, if you buy certain things, you have to get at least three quotes. You have to answer all these questions. And it runs through a process that became quite invasive at the school level. And so actually, people weren't spending their federal money. So when our former federal progress director came across consolidation, the schools loved this. It gives them a little more freedom. Sometimes if they don't have enough money to cover something in their federal allotment, they can combine it with some general fund. For example, to hire a remedial teacher. That has happened at PJ and has been effective. So it does allow for some little bit of flexibility in coming out from under that federal money. So they've asked to continue it. We, the paperwork is great for them on the backend and our world. It is a little, it's a little extensive, but, but we've learned to handle it. So we're perfect, you know, it's actually working out really well. This is our budget that we have submitted for this year. All of this can change whenever we get our Title I allotment. We don't have it yet, it could increase for the schools. So it would give them more funding than what you see here. We did pull back a little bit, not a lot, a little bit, on their instructional funding. But we know we have carryover coming, and we should get a larger allotment than what we've used to do this. Whatever we commit to on the federal side of this, I can't decrease. I can increase it, but I cannot decrease it. So we have to be very conservative at this point until we know what our real numbers are. Behind that, page, oh, this is a long section. This is all the detail for their classrooms and for their academic coaches at each of the five schools that participate. So this runs from page fifty-five to page eighty-three. So that is their classroom money. So you want to see what they're spending in the classroom and how much of it they're spending. This is the detail you need to look at. It's broken up by-
And Amy, so all of that's coming out of that fund one fifty?
It does. You have questions? Okay, I'll go to page eighty-four. This is special revenue. This is all the federal grants, our GLRS program, Right From The Start and School Food. At this point, the only ones I actually have numbers on for next year are GLRS, Right From The Start, and School Food. The rest of these are estimates. We do not have final numbers for next year, but we start paying people in July. Some of them are funded by these grants. So I have to present this to you. This is based on our initial allotment from twenty-three, it's very conservative. And the detail, and this is almost like when I do a budget amendment, it has all the detail on the pages to follow by grant, by section. And this is actually the description that is in the consolidated application that we must get approval for. So basically, you have to know that we're going to spend some of that grant money. And this is my way of letting you know, here are some of the items we could buy, or the staff that we need to pay for. And this is the detail on those grants. CHRISA ends this year, so that grant will go away. ARC will continue, we're looking at around two point nine million dollars. And we have to close it out and they'll, they'll carry over into next year. We have two homeless grants that are still open, that we've only used part of the funding that will be able to carry over. And then we get back to our regular federal funding, which is Title I, Title II, Title IV, and Six B. Six B is special ed and pre-K, especially pre-K. So you're going to see some of those grants, hopefully some of these amendments kind of slow down a little bit. Y'all have questions about that section? That runs from page eighty-five to page ninety-four. Page ninety-five is our school food budget. You know, she is self-sufficient. The only thing that I, that she has come to me with, and we would need a budget amendment for this year to do it, is she has about two thousand dollars worth of debt that is uncollectible. If someone leaves the county and they are not able to locate them, and there's a process they have to go through about notification, then it becomes bad debt. They are not allowed to pay bad debt out, they can't just do away with it. We would have to let them have the money from general fund. We have enough money to do that, and if y'all are okay, we'll bring a budget amendment. It will be for twenty-three to give her the money to close that debt. So she is still struggling, anybody that's still in the system and owes money, you can't do that with. These have to be people that are gone, you cannot get in touch with. So she's already letting know, it's going to be between two thousand and twenty-two hundred, so we're, we're still chasing folks, but.
What's the estimate overall?
I'm not sure where they are right now. We've been able to collect, and if it was staff members, we've collected it all. I don't know her total at this moment, but I can find out. It, it has become a concern for school food. And she's actually gonna, she's actually right now going through other ways to try to get assistance collecting this money during the year before it gets so bad. Because there were, what's left, there are people that are still here. There are kids that are still in school, and their parents won't pay. They won't apply for free and reduced, and they might qualify, but they also won't pay. So she's looking for some guidance, too. She's, she's checking the rules and the regulations to see what we have the right to do. We actually talked about that this morning, so trying to help.
And I'd just like to say, God bless her on that. She is, you know, it's, it's a tough situation to be in, no child in this county. We don't want any child in this county to be hungry-
Right.
-while, while they're in a school. But also, you know, we understand the fiscal responsibility of it, so I think she's doing a great job.
Well, and no child is denied a plate. That is the thing, they can be offered an alternative lunch in certain situations, but they are not denied a plate. That, that, I mean, they are not denied food, they will be fed. So, you know, the thing is, you know, we'd like it to be paid for, but, but we're going to keep working on that and see if we can come up with a good plan on how to handle that. See if we can get some assistance from some different areas, so.
Well, it's a little bit of a hangover from the COVID situation where the department, I've got to pay for it. It's been meaningless for a couple of years, and I had a trouble getting back in the habit of doing it.
Well, see, it's just like the summer program. The summer program's free. You know, you, you do provide free summers, and we did a couple of years with the COVID where it was free. But, you know, it is that, now, now it's not. And, and if you qualify for free and reduced, though, we will help you apply. And see, that takes care of it. It'll even take care of their back situation to a certain point. But, but some, some just won't, won't pay. They don't qualify, and, and she's struggling, she really is. She has an excellent fund balance. That's something in special revenue I should have mentioned. She has a significant fund balance to the point that you're going to see her revenue is less than her expense because she has to spend some extra money, same way this year. They keep giving us grant money. So it's, it's a double-edged sword. You have to stay under certain limits, and she is under very strict limits. We'll, we can get a finding if we don't adhere to rules and regulations. But they keep, they keep giving us CARES money, and, and in particular, school food. We needed that a couple of years ago. Now we're, you know, even though she's got bad debt, she can't pay for it. She cannot use that money for that. We've bought milk, we can do commodities, we can do lots of things, but we cannot cover bad debt. So, and that would be helpful. Do y'all have questions about school food?
Just, and I don't know, Amy, if you know the answer to this, and maybe you've told us before. Are a lot of the folks or parents who aren't paying, were they on free and reduced before? And now are just not applying because they don't know that the the free lunches have kind of gone back to?
I don't think anyone can say they don't know that we're back on paid lunch. They, in the school, in food service, in the central office, they actively reach out to parents that they knew did qualify-
Okay.
-over and over and over. And there are some people that just won't, because you can do a family application now. You know, it can be very private, it's online, you know, there are lots of ways to do it, you know, if you want to stay private about it, and do one application for all, all kids, however many kids you have in the system. If you're approved, you're approved for all of them at one time. I don't think it's that people don't know about it. Maybe they don't want to apply, some people just don't want free lunch, but may not have the funds to pay it. It's, it's kind of a, it's a kind of a fine line. They, they pursue them to a point, and if they tell them no several times, then they, they drop it. Because, you know, if they, if they don't want to do it, we can't force them.
Right.
And for whatever reason, it may be personal, you know, they may not share that with us. But there are quite a few that probably would not qualify, and I would say that's most of it now. They would not qualify and just aren't back in the habit of paying. And we do, we do, we have an app, an app, and you can go on the computer, and you can load money on your card, and it goes in there and keys their code in, and there's no cash that has to flow back and forth, or checks or any of that. So we try to make it a little more convenient, but we're still struggling.
Thank you.
We do get donations from the community, too, though. That's something that recently, we've had several donations come in, so.
Do you have a, and I know it's not your department, but do you have a number on that so far?
I don't, I do not have a number on, on that right now. I can, I can get one, I can find out. I know we had several thousand come in. It, it was brought up by a community member-
Okay.
-at a couple of local meetings, and so we started getting some checks. And people were just walking in and handing, you know, fifteen hundred dollars, that was fantastic. And then I got a phone call put up, too, with this, so it was, oh, that's-
Good, and I think this says a lot about our community, too.
Yes, I think we're very willing to help if, if, if they need to.
Good.
If you don't have any questions about school food, we're going to scoot on to debt service. I do have to present it, even though we have nothing planned, and we have no debt. Still have to present it. And at the bottom of page ninety-six, we have the splopped budget. Our projected fund balance by the end of June is about eleven and a half million. Our estimate for revenue next year, using a seven hundred thousand dollar per month average, and it's a little bit higher than that for the prior twelve months, is eight point four million. Now, under the expense section, we only have one actual contract for projects right now. So I have that and a little bit extra. If we have another project come in, we will amend this and add it. But y'all are going to see this, so don't worry about the fact that that is not very high right now. I've had it be twelve, fifteen million before, when we've had multiple projects going on. But right now, we only have one that we have under contract. So if we have another one come through, we'll come to you, ask for approval, and then we'll amend the budget.
So just to check my figures, where we're at now and what we've checked, and that's basically twenty million that's glossed by the end of the next year. And we've got five, eight, we've committed to spend.
Right. What it is, and that is for maintenance renovations in the M and O category, those little bit bigger projects, like we were talking about, those heat and air units that we're trying to get on a cycle, so replacing quite a few of those. There is a plan to do that, any kind of renovation modification, equipment, furniture that are needed at the, that's needed at the school level, that it will all funnel through there. And there's about a million dollars budgeted. We also budget about a million dollars for technology. He has a replacement plan, it rolls over every year, those bigger items. This is not for supplies, this is not for a subscription renewal. This is for servers, purchase of three thousand computers. These are big things, these are big ticket items. So this is not your normal operating budget. So we have to remind people sometimes what, you know, that's, that's a normal day-to-day expense you should be taking care of, out of your regular budget. Splopped is a little different, so we do have to keep in mind, it was originally called capital outlet. So it is geared toward larger items. Can do things like textbooks, but we don't have a big enough adoption to do that right now. And buses, and I need to, need to clarify something on this. On what, we did budget for six buses. We had asked for amendment in general fund transfer, or out of, excuse me, splosh transportation to buy two additional trucks and a trailer. We got one truck, we got one trailer, and the other truck, they changed the price in the last minute. So I didn't think it was going to push through, so I rolled it into this one. It's going through, they renegotiated, so we are going to buy that truck, so I will probably remove this one. one unless I am told that there's another one needed. This was an item that's kind of, I was like, call me by noon tomorrow and let me know if we are going to be able to buy that truck. It happened today. So I already was in the process of producing this document, and so I did not take it out, but I will probably take it out once I confirm with him we don't need another truck. But we did get one truck and the trailer, so. All right, that's, that's it, that's, that's the budget in a nutshell, so.
Okay, so just, if we go back to the front, so what's, what's the, what's the overall difference, Amy, in budget for like last year to this year?
From the amended budget where we had to add, go ahead and add state health.
Yes.
It's about two point six million dollars.
So it was, what was the budget last year, where's that number?
It's on your summary page, on page one, the amended FY twenty-three budget, is that what you're referring to? It's down at the very bottom, fifty-two million, eight, eighty-eight, excuse me, five ninety-nine, can't see.
Yeah, amended, that's why I got it.
That, that was amended, you know, close to a million dollars just for that state health for certified.
Yep.
Just for that portion of the year.
All right.
I mean, I know it's not complete, but I understand what it is, there's a few things. How, how should we face this fiscal year, twelve, can you give us some rough?
I can. I will tell you, right this minute, we still have eight hundred thousand dollars in purchase orders open. Most of those won't happen. It is things, it typically has to do with something like M and O or transportation, that's where about seven hundred thousand of it is, and it's items that either they put a PO on for the entire year, spent twenty, and they put a fifty thousand dollar purchase order on, or we do have quite a few things still going right now. I do know I'm going to have some pretty good expense coming through in the next few days. One thing is like a hundred and forty thousand dollars-ish should be our power and gas, those bills have not come in. Transportation, we're just waiting to clear some invoices, and we should be able to close them down. To know exactly which ones, because these are typical supply items, like what they've ordered to do summer work and things they'll go ahead and order, I haven't gotten the invoice yet. We will not get anywhere close to eight hundred thousand dollars.
So the difference between the amended and what we spent to date is four point three million dollars, so are we going to be under budget for the year?
Now, the, the other side of that, you can be under budget in, in expense all you want to. If your revenue doesn't come in, then you have a problem. Our revenue, I've run it out, we have another, one more QVE allotment that we, it came in this morning. Again, it gets to a point where I can't keep adding, I have to stop and actually produce this document. At a minimum, we're probably looking at a fund, an add to fund balance of about three million.
Wow.
It will, if those eight hundred thousand NPOs, however much of that doesn't happen, gets added to it.
Then that would cover the proposed budget increase for next year and another side.
Absolutely. So we have some flexibility here at this point, if, if and when y'all get satisfied with what we've presented. We have a couple of things we have to do. You cannot, until you're done with the budget, have your public hearings. We are required to have two, it cannot be in the same week, and it's where the public is invited to come, make comments, have a say in it, and we need to talk about that when we get to that point, setting up those meetings. The digest, I do not have an indication, I'm pushing to find out when we may have a digest. I've gotten it from the first week of July till the last week of August and sometimes later. I know they're trying diligently to get that completed, but I don't have a date right now. It would be really great if we could do, we could have, if y'all, y'all have to tell me, too, or the superintendent, when you're ready to do that tentative approval on the budget, that's another piece, too. You can do those at the same time, or on the same day, you can do separate meetings, you can do meetings together, there are lots of options there. Between the growth in the digest and our fund balance carryover, I feel very good about the budget for next year. I think we have everything covered. I know we're going to have some additional federal funds coming in that we'll be able to utilize. We still have two point nine million dollars in art money, we're in a good place. So, y'all tell me what you need to push this through. Do we need to make changes? Do we need to add some track? Tell me where we are and-
I'm ready to do it.
Because it is this man's recommendation.
This man's recommendation.
And I know, I know you've only been here a minute, but, and, and it was a flurry of activities this last week or two, but I have been through every piece of this budget repeatedly. We have had discussions about it, I've talked to different department heads, we have principles changing, I haven't gotten to all the new principles, I have a couple. We can cover everything, and I know they don't always spend their money. So I'm very comfortable with it, especially after going through it with a fine-to-do com and, and doing a hundred pages of documentation. But I need to hear what you need. I need to know-
I have what I need.
How's your do? How are you doing?
Yeah, as soon as, as soon as Dr. Trump talks, if there's anything else that you wanted to weaken there, we should be ready to proceed by the next meeting.
I, I was thinking, by the next time we meet on thirteenth, if we could possibly use that time to have a, a public hearing, you know, before we meet, and then, as well as-
Attending approval?
Yep.
So you, you've got several options. One, one thing that we've done before and we've talked about is, y'all have the five o'clock meeting and six o'clock meeting. We open this up typically, we usually don't have a lot of people who come, I'll be honest. We have had years when there was something that caused people to come that usually had to do with an athletics event or a sport. But if, you can set a meeting at four thirty, we do have to advertise it, so I need enough time to put it in the newspaper. So I need to know by Tuesday or Monday to get in the newspaper to announce to have it. I would really like to have it at least a week, maybe a week ahead of time, so if we did it at the July regular meeting, maybe set it at four thirty, I have plenty of time to get that ad in the paper saying, we're holding our first public hearing. Do have to have two. After that, you've got some options, but we can go ahead and, if you would like, and do a tentative approval at the regular meeting in July on the regular agenda, I really like to do that, to be transparent with the public. We may or may not have the digest at that time, I kind of doubt it, but if we happen to have a digest, we can, you know, throw that in there, too. But then we can do a second meeting. When we do the final approval, it is good, in my opinion, to have the digest in hand. If we set a final based on a revenue source that may not be accurate, that's not always a good thing. And then we're going to come back and ask you again, so amended, if we do a tentative, I have to put it on our website for two weeks. I do have some things I have to do in the background, but if we looked at maybe the July meeting-
We can start the process at the July meeting, and then we can determine after that.
And we could even go to, to do the final in August, as long as, you know, we have the digest, and there's a, there's a process with tentative approval and final approval on that, too.
I would feel more comfortable if we had actually seen the digest.
I like that.
And know if we're going to roll back-
Right.
-before we finalize.
And once we receive the digest, we can turn it around rather quickly about giving in, sharing information with you. You know, there's some calculations that we do, I already have spreadsheets set up, I drop numbers in, you know, and if I need to have a conversation with the county, sometimes I do, but as long as I have a couple of days, you know, we can get you some good information once we get the digest, so. But are y'all good with scheduling the tentative budget approval for July?
Four thirty? When do you want it? Four thirty?
So if we do it four, if we do it four thirty, do we still have our beforehand at five, what, what's the time?
Four thirty and then five, five for our call meeting, and then six for regular months time.
Here's what we had last year, I think that would-
I know we did one in the middle of a meeting last year, and we had parents, and it was a little, I don't think they understood what we were doing, that we know, because you do have to stop the meeting for, you know, for a little bit of time, even if you don't think anybody's going to stand up, when you have a room full of people, you have to give them the opportunity. It is their opportunity to speak about how they feel about the budget, so you really need to make sure you do it right. Open it up, open the floor, even if nobody seems to be saying anything, you still, you know, let, give the public an opportunity to say what they want to say.
Well, and that's, that's kind of what I mean, about actually seeing the digest before we finalize, we know, yes, the assessments have went up, but we may roll back the mileage to offset some of it, but we don't need that much for budget.
We'll see. We, we need a little chunk. It would be nice if it does go up as much as they say. Plan B, we have fund balance rollover, and you can just turn around and reapply it. Good? Want to share a couple of things with you before we close? For next year, between general fund and grant funds, we're going to cover about six hundred and thirty-three employees, some of those work for ESS or ABM. This is actually a decrease of six people from the prior year. For FY twenty-three, like I said before, about eighteen percent of our budgeted general fund was for operating, it's cut, it's down this year to sixteen percent, but that's eighty-four percent of the money that we spend is for people. A lot of counties, it's, it'll be higher. We have been up as high as about eighty-eight percent before. You know, we're doing some things when it comes to maintenance and transportation. Ours is a little expensive sometimes, but we, we've got, hey, our shop runs great, we get, DOT comes in, they don't find problems with our buses, and we do have a nice, a nice fleet that's under ten years average age. State health, the increases they pass down to us, but keep in mind, two point six million. The increase for certified just on the state health portion is two point seven million dollars. The increase for non-certified is four hundred seventy thousand dollars, that's a total of over three point one million, and we still were able to bring this budget in. So every single person does not participate with state health. We did consider that, and we did not budget for everyone to, to participate. We looked at trends from the past and currently, and, and set it at a nice, comfortable rate, so if more do sign up, we still have money to do that, but we did not plan for everybody, too. The increase in the certified scale for the two thousand dollars the state handed down increased our expense about nine hundred and ten thousand dollars. The local increase that plays along with that is about a hundred thousand. Then you step to the certified scale is close to three hundred sixty-five thousand dollars. The non-certified scale increase of three and a half percent was three hundred thirty-five thousand. If all of those folks maxed out and got ten years credit, it would be about four hundred and sixty thousand dollars. All these items we had to consider, weigh, you know, to track down folks and find out, you know, where they are with this. A few, we did have to make some assumptions, so we may not spend all that salary, especially for that ten-year credit. If I could get to people like people in this office, we assign what we think they'll get, you know, if they told me blah, 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 now they haven't sent their paperwork in, and it hasn't been evaluated, but it's also not due for another month and a half, and I don't really think we need to wait that long to find out. Let's go ahead and get our budget set, we got to get July running, but I think we're in a really good place. We did a lot of changes, and I think a lot of people are very happy with what's happening with their pay.